Counselor Consalvo, Counselor Feeny, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Linehan, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Ross, Counselor Tobin, Turner, Counselor Yancey.
Okay. And like before by the clerk that a quorum is present, I now ask our clerk to join us and everyone in attendance to please rise for the invocation. Please direct your attention to Clerk Solano. Thank you.
As we all know, the Psalms are thousands of years old and most of them were written by King David, yet their relevance today is amazing and profound. So I've chosen Psalm 139 today. David is having a moment of awe when he's making up this poem. He's in awe about who God is and he's in awe about how we have been created and how God is present in our lives. So I thought that during this terrible time of budgets and campaigns and the pulling that goes on in this time, it might be just the moment to change perspective. So I'd like you to listen carefully to Psalm 139. It really is awesome. "O Lord, you have searched me and you know me; you know when I sit and when I stand; you understand my thoughts from afar; you search out my path and my lying down and are acquainted with all my ways, even before a word is on my tongue. Behold, O Lord, you know the whole of it. You hem me in behind and before and lay your hand upon me. Such knowledge is too wonderful for me; it is high; I cannot attain it. Where shall I go from your spirit, or where shall I flee from your presence? If I ascend to heaven, you are there; if I make my bed in shale, you are there; if I take the wings of the morning and dwell in the uttermost parts of the sea, even there your hand shall lead me and your right hand shall hold me fast. If I say surely the darkness will hide me and the light about me be as light. Even the darkness is not dark for you; the night is bright as the day, for darkness is as light with you. For you formed my inmost parts; you knit me together in my mother's womb. I praise you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made. Wonderful are your works; my soul knows it very well. My frame was not hidden from you when I was being made in secret, intricately woven in the depths of the earth. Your eyes saw my unformed substance. In your book were written, every one of them, the days that you formed for me, when as yet there were none of them. How precious to me are your thoughts, O God; how vast is the sum of them! If I would count them, they would outnumber the sands. I awake and I am still with you. Search me, O God, and know my heart; try me and know my thoughts; and see if there be any grievous way in me, and lead me in the way everlasting."
Madam Clerk, for that aspiring prayer. If we could now all pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Counselor Flaherty wishes to be recorded as present, hearing no objection, as does Counselor Yun, hearing no objection. They are both so added, as well as Counselor Tobin. Any of my colleagues wishing to make any changes to the minutes from last week, please signify, seeing, hearing none. The minutes stand approved. Reports of public officers and others. Communications from Ms. Honored the Mayor.
Docket 0868, message and order authorizing the Department of Neighborhood Development to apply for, accept, and expend federal FY09 lead-based paint hazard control grant program funds and ARA Community Development Block Grant Neighborhood Stabilization Program, CDBGNSP-2, from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
That matter shall be referred jointly to the Committee on Housing and Federal Stimulus Oversight. Read the next, well, let's wait for the, nope, the chairman is here. If you could read the next three dockets, they're all from Public Safety.
Docket 0869, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY10 Public Safety Answering Point and Regional Emergency Communications Center Support and Incentive Grant of $1,949, pardon me, $1,945,624 from the Executive Office of Public Safety, State 911 Department. Docket 0870, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend the FY10 State 911 Department Training Grant Funds of $362,673 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. And docket 0871, message and order authorizing the Police Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $2,076.26 from the Suffolk County District Attorney's Office for the purpose of providing additional funding to District B2 as part of the Grove Hall Safe Neighborhood Initiative.
Chair recognizes the Chair of Public Safety, Counselor Murphy.
Mr. President, could I have docket 0869, 0870 signed to the Committee on Public Safety and could I move suspension of the rules and passage of the $2,000 grant on the Grove Hall Safe Neighborhood Initiative?
Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0871. All those in favor say aye, opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0871 has been passed. Madam Clerk, please refer dockets 0869 and 0870 to the Committee on Public Safety. Also, Madam Clerk, Counselor Feeny moves that we approve the minutes earlier this week from Monday. All those in favor say aye, opposed say nay. The ayes have it and those minutes stand approved. Next item. Communications from Ms. Honored the Mayor.
Docket 0872, message and order for confirmation of the appointments of constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of bonds for the period commencing May 1, 2009 and ending April 30, 2010, pardon me, 2012.
Matter shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations.
Docket 0873, message transmitting certain information from the Police Department regarding crime statistics for the period of May 1, 2009 and ending May 31, 2009.
That matter shall be replaced on file. Reports of public officers and others.
Docket 0874, the constable bonds of the following having been duly approved by the Collector Treasurer were received.
No, that's a, the question now comes on approval under the usual terms and conditions for the constable bonds. All those in favor say aye, opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The constable bonds stand approved. Chair recognizes Counselor Feeny.
Mr. President, I move for reconsideration of docket number 0872.
Counselor Feeny moves for reconsideration of docket 0872. We need a second for that. There has been a second by Counselor Murphy. All those in favor of reconsideration say aye, opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0872 has been reconsidered. You now have the floor. Counselor Feeny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would rise to ask for suspension and passage of docket number 0872, that they be passed under the usual terms and conditions. Thank you.
Counselor Feeny moves suspension and passage under the usual terms and conditions of docket 0872. All those in favor say aye, opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0872 has been passed under the usual terms and conditions. Docket 0875, if you could read that in conjunction with docket 075 to 078, please.
Docket 0875, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of William E. McGonigal as interim administrator of the Boston Housing Authority. Docket 0-
Just one moment, please. Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to publicly congratulate Bill McGonigal. Bill was born in the same public housing development I was born in, but most importantly, he's the consummate professional. I know I can probably speak for everybody here when dealing with Bill McGonigal, someone who I find to be extremely super-responsive, energetic, and compassionate. So clearly, he has big shoes to fill, but I know I can speak personally. I have great expectations for Bill McGonigal. He's, for a large extent, been doing that particular job now for many, many years and he's the face a lot of residents look for when things are going on in their developments, whether it's a family development or senior elderly disabled development, or if it's just walking through the neighborhood and you see someone, he recognizes someone, or they need someone, they have a family member that needs help. So again, congratulations on behalf of another Flahertys and I would suggest that my colleagues at the council as well congratulate him in his new position and we wish him the very best. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I join with you in congratulating Bill McGonigal for this much-deserved position. Chair recognizes Counselor Feeny.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to join in. Bill McGonigal has been an anchor and a, really, almost a mentor to so many various directors of the Boston Housing Authority, going back to Doris Bunty, you know, tenure, and certainly really increased his role under, you know, Director Enriquez, who recognized his talent, his skill, and I think this is a great day for Boston Housing Authority to have someone who started from the very bottom and worked his way through the system, understands the system, understands the plight of the families impacted by the system and benefited by the system. So I'm very pleased and also would like to chime in and send him our best and we're really very proud that he was selected for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next docket, please.
Docket 0876, notice was received from the Mayor of his absence from the city on June 5, 2009 until June 7, 2009.
Place that matter on file, please.
Docket 0877, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the City of Boston and Trinity Washington Beach Phase 1A Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121a, Section 6a of the Mass General Laws.
That matter shall be placed on file. Chair recognizes Counselor Consalvo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just briefly, wanted to ask that the Committee on Housing, as well as my office, get a copy of the agreements. Obviously, the issues that is mentioned in the communication is in my district, but also was approved by this body and the committee and it's just a great thing in the neighborhood and happy to report that actually the project is moving forward at a rapid clip with most of the residents moved out of the first phase and then demo has taken place and if you drive up Washington Street, it's literally already transformed now that the demo has happened and they're actually starting construction of the new units. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you and congratulations. Madam Clerk, please transmit files, dockets 877, 878 to Counselor Consalvo. Reports of committees.
I did-
877, rather.
Docket 0878, communication was received from the City Clerk of the filing by the Boston Redevelopment Authority of the agreement between the City of Boston and Trinity Washington Beach Phase 1B Limited Partnership pursuant to Chapter 121a, Section 6a of the Mass General Laws.
That matter shall be placed on file.
Docket 0390, the Committee on Art, Film, Humanities, and Tourism, to which was referred on March 11, 2009. Docket 0390, message and order authorizing the Office of Arts, Tourism, and Special Events to accept and expend a grant of $176,100 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council to support year-round programming agendas of Boston's cultural and educational organizations, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Art, Film, and Communities and Tourism Committee, Counselor Tobin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon. Just want to thank my fellow committee member, Counselor Linehan, for attending a very informative hearing. My eight years in the council, I've been chair of this committee proudly for those eight years and every year we receive this grant, the cultural committee upstairs receives a pass-through grant from the Massachusetts Cultural Council of varying dollars depending on what the state budget looks like. This year was for $176,000 and change and that money, we had a hearing, is going to be doled out in increments of $1,000 to $5,000, mostly on the lower end of that spectrum, to approximately 70 arts and cultural organizations, ranging everywhere from graphic artists to theater to dance to poetry, cutting across many different disciplines in the arts and cultural communities. Seventy different groups representing every single neighborhood, every single community in the city of Boston was a very informative hearing. It's important asking committee members and the council as a whole to vote on this so these much-needed dollars, even though it seems like a little bit of money to us, to a lot of folks, to these organizations, it really keeps them going, particularly during the summer months and keeps a lot of young people occupied that could use these dollars in their accounts as soon as possible. So I'd ask their indulgence and your indulgence, Mr. President, in moving this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Consalvo on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to thank the Chair for moving forward this on an expedited fashion. I had spoken to him about it and just to give you an idea how important grant funding is, particularly when we're in these tough fiscal times, portion of this funding actually is going to go to a great arts scene, arts festival that's going to happen the second week in July, right in my district in Hyde Park, where we actually close down Logan and Clary Square and get about 1,000 people from all over Boston come in for an arts festival. And in these tough fiscal times, it's this kind of funding that is going to allow this arts festival in Hyde Park and Logan Square that so many people have worked so hard on to continue. So I want to commend the Chair, thank him for moving this, and urge my colleagues to support this because I know there are many worthy groups, but this is just an idea of one that is within three weeks' time, depending on this money, to move forward with a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Chair recognizes Counselor Feeny.
I'm sorry, Mr. President. I rise to ask to have the next docket. I didn't know if it needed to be read into, docket number 0559. There were some minor technical language changes, so I don't know whether it needs to be-
Yeah, I will, I'll come right back to that. Let me pass this one and we'll grab, we're going to withdraw that matter, right? Yeah. Okay, so Counselor Tobin moves passage of docket 0390. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. And docket 0390 has been passed. Counselor Feeny moves withdraw of docket 0559? All those, would you wish to speak on that matter?
It's just, it was just a technical change and we will be resubmitting the report and work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does that require a vote? No vote required. That has been withdrawn. At this point, I'd like to call on Counselor Mark Siomo, the Chair of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I asked that we pull dockets number 0865 through 0867 from the green sheets, page 15 of 16 and 16 of 16.
Docket 0865, I retransmit here with my fiscal year 2010 recommended budget for the City of Boston. The recommended operating budget totaling $2.5 billion is $26.3 million, or 1.1% less than the fiscal year 2009 budget. This represents the first time in over 15 years that the city's operating budget is lower than the previous year.
Chair recognizes, hearing no objection from a member of the Ways and Means Committee, the Chair now recognizes Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me first express my deep appreciation of both Sheila Temple and Chelsea Harris for helping guide me, the Committee on Ways and Means, through this very exhaustive and lengthy process. Their expertise in this process was invaluable to me as the Chair and I just want to recognize their great efforts on my behalf and on this body's behalf. Thank you. Over the past three months, we held over 30 budget hearings reviewing the budget of every department. Through hearings, questionnaires, and numerous briefings by the administration, the F-10 budget season has provided thorough and exhaustive review of the city's finances. Unfortunately, like many other municipalities, the tough economic climate has placed severe strain on the city of Boston. Drastic cuts in state aid have made the fiscal outlook for F-10 more grim than initially anticipated. As said before, tough times require tough decisions and accordingly, this budget process has required us to make many tough decisions. We have asked many to sacrifice in order to produce a reasonable budget and a responsible budget, and I would like to recognize the 22 city unions who agreed to a wage freeze in order to minimize layoffs and preserve city services. They should all be commended for this. At the beginning of this process, I committed myself to ensuring that the budget I ultimately stood for was responsible, accurate, and made the most of the limited resources available. The budget presented before you is just that. I am confident that the budget puts the city of Boston in a good position to face continuing fiscal challenges in the coming years. Through our hearing process, my colleagues, your input was invaluable. We were able to impact several important investments and expenditures. We preserved arts, music, and language programs, as well as library services to the Boston Public Schools. We restored funds to the Boston Centers of Youth and Families childcare programs. The budget continues to expand single-stream recycling to the entire city, to each neighborhood by the end of the fiscal year 10. Our school system will include five new and expanded K-8 schools and five new expanded and new pilot schools. This budget also increases resources for foreclosure and homelessness prevention. And there were also no cuts made to the Mayor's Summer Jobs Program, so the city will be able to employ 3,600 teens this summer. I also want to take this time to thank all of you, my colleagues, for your support and input through this process. Hearing attendance was strong and tough questions were asked. Through your efforts, whether advocating for energy efficiency, recycling, or education, the residents of the city of Boston were very well-served. I believe departments were held accountable for their spending, as made evident by the $3 million reduction in contractual services that were included in this resubmitted budget. I also want to thank the administration for their year-round work helping to maintain Boston's fiscal strength. The mayor's team, including Lisa Signori, Karen Connor, and Marley Dunford tirelessly provided new information and updates throughout this ever-changing process. Thank you. It is time to move our city forward with passage of this budget and continue our work together to address the many challenges we will face in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Consalvo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Just to rise to support the Chair, want to commend him on the great work that he did. He really worked tirelessly as a former Chair of Ways and Means, and I know you were and Counselor Murphy was. It's a huge task, which requires a lot of work, a lot of the public work that you see, but also a lot of research and reading and learning and he, as a new counselor and a new Chair, first-time Counselor, and he immediately took the reins of the Ways and Means Committee, really hit the ground running, really worked as tirelessly and as hard as anybody I've seen in this position, except for me, of course. And he really took the, he really took the job seriously. And what I'm really impressed by, some of the attended, a majority of all the hearings, is the thorough process he ran, the hard-hitting questions, the real pushback to the administration to make sure answers were given, the follow-up on individual counselors' requests, when I had several inquiries for information requests for the administration. As Chair, he would make sure that that information request was given so I could be comfortable and so my questions could be answered. But most importantly, in these tough fiscal times, and look, I've worked in the legislature for eight years, I worked on eight state budgets, I worked on four federal budgets when I was in Senator Kennedy's office, and now I'm in my sixth budget here, seventh budget here, as a city counselor. I have never seen anything like this and I have pretty good experience in this. He led this process with respect. He led it professionally and he really, I think, made us a better body as a city council because we were able to really hold the administration accountable in many different areas, particularly areas, as he mentioned, in schools, which are important, me as a father of two Boston Public School children, the childcare issue that Counselor Tobin, Murphy, Conley, and myself, which affected my district with BCYF, and so many other things and public policy issues that happened in this budget that were changed and resubmitted as a result of this body, the city council, these members, and the great work of our Chair. So I urge my colleagues to support our Chair. This budget is what it is. It's tough fiscal times. It's unlike anything I've ever seen in all my experience and it's a year where we can't be all things to all people, but we know that we've done our job, we held the administration accountable, and we're moving forward with a responsible budget that doesn't mortgage our entire future and I urge our colleagues to support it.
Thank you. Any else, any other of my colleagues wishing to speak on this matter? Chair recognizes Counselor Yun.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do commend the Chair of Ways and Means for this budget process and especially in this first time. I will be voting no on the operating budget. I will be voting no on the operating budget, and this will be my fourth time. I have, I have to disagree with one statement that the chairman did make, which is that this budget moves the city forward. I don't think it moves the city forward at all, and it keeps the city exactly the same. And I think in this day and age, it's unacceptable. Major reports over decades have shown that we could be saving millions of dollars by overhauling the fire department. And in this era where we have 911 and cell phones, we haven't made any progress in eliminating obsolete antiquated fire alarm boxes that cost our city $3 million a year. The Manino administration could finally have dealt with unsustainable personnel costs, including out-of-control overtime costs, and we didn't. We haven't taken any steps forward in performance-based management, using 311 or to improve city services that use information. We haven't made any steps toward using current technology to manage our fleet, our automobile fleet. And we have consistently seen an inability of the administration to use data and information to make decisions about our city resources. It's called performance-based management, and we haven't made any steps toward that in an era, again, which we need to reconsider everything about the way we do government, just the way we're doing it on a national level. Billions of dollars of real estate that are locked up in this black box called the Boston Redevelopment Authority. We haven't made any gestures even toward opening up that black box, whether through this hearing, and this is what's been happening every year since I've been here, to understand how billions of dollars of real estate and property can be used in a way to generate economic development and real revenue for our city's operating budget. And we're going to hear, as some of you know, about my proposal to eliminate the BRA and just start from scratch. And then, and finally, it just has recently come out, the Mounted Police Unit. This is a perfect example of the many low-hanging fruit sacrifices in this budget that we've gone after, rather than the real reform that our city so badly needs and has been well documented at the beginning of this, of this process by the Boston Finance Commission and others. And instead, we've laid off teachers, we've disbanded effective community policing unit, is shortsighted, and for this reason, I regret that I will again vote no on this operating budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes, Chair recognizes Counsel Yancey.
Thank you very much. I rise to commend the work of our good colleague from Alston-Brighton. I know that it must have appeared to be a Herculean task when he agreed to serve as Chair of Ways and Means, and we did, in fact, review not all departments of city government, but most, or certainly all of the larger ones. Mr. President, we are indeed in some very challenging times, which is obvious to every member of this body. And as you know, Mr. President, for the last, I think, four years, I've been fighting for a paradigm shift in city government, particularly with regards to how we address the issue of youth and violence. This budget doesn't represent a shift at all. This budget really is a status quo budget, and we ought to be frank and open about it. But this year is different from last year. This year, we're facing some very severe cuts in local aid, and we can't escape it. So, Mr. President, I believe that while this budget is certainly very, very far from perfect, it certainly doesn't meet my expectations in terms of hiring of youth workers and street workers. We don't even have enough youth workers for each of the community centers that we have. And while this budget, I believe, places an inordinate burden on the school department that will be, that actually will make up almost 70% of all personnel cuts in city government, take place in the school department. The total layoffs is 496, and of the 496 layoffs, 351 within the Boston Public School Department. That has to change, Mr. President, but we do not have the ability in the city council to increase any item out of the budget. This is essentially the mayor's budget, and while I commend my colleagues for being able to restore some of the mayor's proposed cuts, let's be very, very clear that this budget is the mayor's budget. Our role is to either accept, reject, or cut the budget, and I am not prepared to propose any additional cuts in this budget. What I am prepared to do is to offer an olive leaf to the administration and to each of our colleagues to recommit to trying to restore some of the cuts, particularly in the school department and even within Boston Centers for Youth and Families. But given the very severe cuts that not only Boston's experiencing, but each of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I believe that the maintenance of effort that's represented by this budget is perhaps the best we can do today. But I ask that our colleagues take a look at a couple of areas. Every year, the city hosts events on the plaza, and I was really surprised to learn that we only received $10,000 from the Big Apple Circus. $10,000, I don't think, is sufficient. I also learned, Mr. President, that we're only receiving $15,000 for the installation of almost 200 antenna sites and cell sites on public property. That is totally out of line. I don't know who negotiated that deal, but it was a very bad deal because I know of many instances in the city of Boston where we've been, where private owners receive upwards of $200,000 for just one site, and we're talking about 200 sites. So those are areas that we have to look at within fiscal year 210. It is true that with regards to those cell sites, that there will be a percent of revenue that should generate certainly more than the $15,000 or $20,000 that's been paid so far. With all that said, Mr. President, and my friend, the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, I'm going to support this budget. I'm going to support the operating budget, I'm going to support the school department's budget, and hopefully, in the very near future, I'll be supporting a capital budget that includes money to build Boston's first new high school since 1979. I was embarrassed, Mr. President, when I read the Sunday Globe, and they had our children learn how to play baseball on concrete on the side of the Jeremiah Burke High School, a school that was recently renovated. We can do better, and we must do better, and we will do better, and we will build that new school in Maryupan that will service the entire city of Boston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Lanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to congratulate Chairman Siomo on a extremely difficult task, on his efforts, his diligent efforts during this process, and his acute and presentation here today in stating what really happened during the process and how difficult it was, but how reasonable this budget is. I commend all the, all those who helped to create and to mend this responsible budget. And these are dire times, but this is not a dire budget. There was a 1-point percent decrease, but we did all the things necessary to reach down and to make this budget as best we could. We decreased it. On the mere back of a $95 million budget cut from state aid to our city, state aid to our city, $95 million bucks, figure it out, Boston. We saved many important programs, although, no, we could not save them all. We put teachers back in the classroom, especially in the areas that Counsel Siomo spoke of. We minimized layoffs, and we, we minimized the cuts in service delivery. Yeah, it'd be great to expand, it'd be great to do all the things that we'd like to do, but these are dire times. And again, the budget, as reasonable and as tight as it is, is not dire. We dug further into reserves than we ever did before, and that's significant. So that's only going to last this year and next. And the projection for revenue and the projection for our budget for the next fiscal year is at least as bad, so that will be on top of what we've already done this year. And me personally, we saved jobs, many of them Boston residents, because the people at the bottom of the rung and the bottom of the seniority list are generally people who live in this city, who feed families, who pay taxes, who contribute on a regular basis to the community. So we saved jobs for many Boston residents. I want to commend the administration and all the team here in the Boston City Council for the hard work that they did, and look forward to continuing our efforts in the future on presenting the most reasonable, fiscally sound budget that we can. And again, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to rise and first commend Chairman Mark Siomo for working really hard in his leadership during this budget process. He did a great job, and I know he worked hard because I was getting those phone calls late at night, and he always wanted to know if he was doing the right thing, and you did. I also want to take this time to thank Sheila and Chelsea for your work, me and us on Monday mornings, and I appreciate that. But I want to say something. I want to thank Lisa Signori, and we all should be thanking Lisa Signori and the mayor, all right? And we should be thanking them because for years, and I know because I put budgets together when I was operations director at Transportation Department, and when I started, I had 99 employees, and when I left, I had 69. And we would have to make those budget cuts, and thank God we made those budget cuts, and they had that money in reserves. Thank God we had that money in reserves if we couldn't use that $45 million. I was on Google the other day just looking at other cities and what's happening in other cities. New York City, they're cutting their ambulances, they're laying off firefighters, they're raising taxes, they're cutting police, thousand teachers, many thousand school employees. There in Miami, there's layoffs, layoffs, furloughs, employees will be taking cuts. Philadelphia closing fire stations and pools and libraries. Ohio, Columbus, Ohio, closing recreation centers, cuts in neighborhood health cares, health centers. Cities cutting down their lights. Every other light, they're going to, you know, pull them out so they can save electricity bills. You know something? This budget is not everything for everyone. It's not. But I could go home tonight and sleep knowing that my streets are going to be safe, we have police patrolling our streets. I could go home tonight knowing that my neighborhoods are safe because we have firefighters out there that are going to protect them. I could go home tonight knowing that my, my neighborhoods will be clean, our city will be clean because we have public work workers who are going to be out there cleaning our streets. And you know something? And guess what? We, our kids are going to work this summer. We have summer jobs for our kids. There's going to be programs, pools will be open this summer, there's going to be all kinds of activities for our kids this summer. I could go to bed today, tonight, after voting this budget, knowing that during these tough financial times, that our city is in good shape. And yes, I'm going to thank the mayor. You said it's the mayor's budget. I'm going to commend the mayor for this work in this city, all right, for his work in this city and this budget, knowing that, that we could go home tonight and we do have a nice, safe city. Do we still have work? We have a lot of work to do, and that's our jobs as city councilors. But guess what? Guess what? We don't have major layoffs in the city of Boston. We're not closing libraries and pools and schools and what other cities are going through right now. So, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you again, and I will be voting yes on this budget, and I urge all my colleagues to vote yes on this budget. Don't make it a political statement. All right? Don't make it a political statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Feeney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to also join in the chorus to commend our good colleague and Chair of Ways and Means for his really tremendous effort throughout this budget process, and to recognize individual councils who played such an integral part in moving this issue and the issues that I'm sure will be discussed as we move through this process, whether we were talking about horses or schools or capital dollars, whatever the issue has been, it has been placed on the table, we've talked about it, we've weighed the issues, we've weighed the cost, we've weighed the impact. And I would be really remiss if I didn't recognize Sheila and Chelsea, Lisa, Karen, Molly Dunford, for their attentiveness and listening and hearing what our concerns were as we represent the people of Boston, but also trying to find resolution. This is not a perfect budget, but I don't think we're going to see a perfect budget for quite some time. What we can be grateful for is that when the resubmital of this budget came on Monday, when other cities and towns are cutting, cutting, closing, shutting the lights off, we added additional $10 million in the resubmital, five from the OPEB money, five million from the OPEB money, and five million from the reserve fund, making it a $45 million hit to the reserve fund. You know, for all those who shook their head and said, you know, oh, we're so tight-fisted, thank God that we did have leadership in this city through the mayor, through Lisa, and we know we give her a hard time because, you know, she's, she really holds those reins tightly, but thank God she has. Because where would we be if we did not have her expertise and her courage of her conviction? So as we pass this budget, we do so knowing that there are some that are very disappointed, that there are going to be changes in this budget, that it's going to be a difficult year, but knowing that we still have a fundamental foundation that can carry us through next year. We're going to have the opportunity with the local aid of, you know, .75 and also the 2% on the hotel motel tax. You know, we hope there will be additional discussion and that this will be another opportunity for us to look at restoration and stabilizing our funds. I think that this budget is a responsible one, it is respectful, not just to the people in this chamber, but to the people that we represent. No one got everything. Many of us got very little, but it is for the greater good. And to those unions who had the courage, who had the compassion for their fellow employees, for the people that they serve in this city, and stood up and said, we're going to take a pay freeze because we want to keep people delivering those services, I am so proud to serve in government with you. We need to recognize that we are all in this together. And when we have individual, individuals who think that they don't have to play and be part of the team, it's very disappointing, very, very disappointing. And I am just tremendously proud, tremendously grateful to our chairman, to this whole process. It's been a little bloody at times, a little ugly at times, but I do agree with Counsel Lamatina. Lamatina. It's the best that we could possibly do in these dire times. And, you know, as we move forward and we realize some of the stimulus dollars, some of the local aid taxes, I know that we will continue to do our work on this, that this will be done with due diligence and a commitment and a compassion to the people that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Feeney. I'm sorry, Counsel Flaherty.
Do it one more time. Just do it one more time.
I forgot something else.
Sorry about that. Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, each year I take the budget process very seriously in attempt to understand the exact rationale for spending decisions. During every budget hearing I attended this year, most of them actually second seat to our chair, I saw the answers for how decisions were being made and determined, and specifically asking for the data that was used to reach these decisions. And too many times, the administration's answers revealed that there was a lack of evidence, that data was driving these decisions, or in many instances, we were told that they just didn't have the data yet. Even with promises of more data in years to come, it means that nothing will change to ensure that it is informing our policies of spending decisions. Just yesterday, dealing with the resubmital, we saw a PowerPoint presentation that had figures from June 11, almost two weeks ago, or just last night, at a hearing that was convened by Chair of Public Safety and yourself, joined in by several of our colleagues, police brass couldn't tell us with certainty the exact dollar amount that it would take to save our precious and valued mounted police unit that dates back to 1870. I was hoping to hear from some of our historians and folks that, you know, a couple of weeks ago were advocating for tradition. This is tradition here that actually adds tremendous value with respect to public safety. Extraction during very difficult situations, crowd control, a very useful tool, and yet is going to fall by the wayside, most likely without hearing a peep. Unfortunately, I left most of those hearings wondering whether we would ever begin to make thoughtful decisions based on trends, need and genuine priority. I understand that there are challenging economic times in front of us here that require challenging decision-making, but we must be thoughtful in our approach and also scientific in our decisions. I cannot support a budget for a government that has not conducted rigorous, sweeping performance review, that is required to squeeze out all waste, that cuts programs with no proven results, and that makes constructive cost-saving consolidations. You know, I'd prefer to support cuts to programs that are not working before I would support laying off our police teachers and those that provide critical services to our community or that fail our youth. And as Chair of Youth Affairs, and I know that our Chair of Ways and Means and yourself can attest that that's something that I advocated for throughout this entire process, this administration, their handling of this budget, and the way that they're dealing with our current economic crisis demonstrates a lack of focus that is critical for putting our city on stronger financial ground. I can point to a number of areas, you know, that kind of, you know, come to mind, you know, the number of consultants that are still on our payroll. The fact that over the last five years, thirty-seven million dollars has gone uncollected from parking fines. If we extend back two more years to seven years, it's actually forty-seven million. Things like that. Cities failed to adopt a comprehensive data management system such as Citistat, it's failed to be forthcoming with its spending information, and it has failed to deliver a budget that residents can understand and trust. We can do better. I'm not going to tell people that they need to have their head examined, but I will tell you that I'm going to vote my conscience, and I will be voting against the city's operating budget. All of that said, want to commend the Chair for conducting a very thoughtful and deliberate process. Again, more often than not, I was sitting next to him, watching him cull through line item by line item. So for his efforts, I commend him as a friend and colleague. This isn't about him. This vote particularly is not about him. It's also not about you as the Chair for your appointments to the various committees and your trust and confidence in me to chair the Committee on Youth Affairs here on the Council. This is about working harder, working smarter, accepting innovation and technology, making it part of the way we do business here with respect to identifying trends and making smart management and business decisions. And given some of the things that I've mentioned and things that will not be moving forward with our city in 2010, I would argue that this is a budget, again, that does not pass muster with respect to my standards. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me start by commending the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Seomo. When you announced early in January that Counsel Seomo was going to chair the Committee on Ways and Means, I have to be honest, I was suspect because he was only here one year as to whether or not he could withstand the rigors of such an arduous schedule and the pressures that go with it. And he's done so with flying colors, and I want to congratulate him for his expert way of handling all of these hearings. I want to also thank the best team in baseball, Sheila Temple and Chelsea Harris, who are just great, great additions to our budget staff. They make it go, and they have great insight, intuition, and knowledge and depth of the city budget process, and frankly, they made me look good as the Chair of Ways and Means, and I'm sure they added to Counsel Seomo's efforts. So congratulations to them. I also want to say that on the outset, and I think it's, I don't want to be too redundant here, but we had a ninety-five million-dollar cut, as Counsel Linehan pointed out, a thirty-two million-dollar cut in the resubmission of the budget that came in on Monday from the original budget that was submitted in April. And it's almost, there's almost a wholesale abrogation of the partnership at the state level that we need to subsist on here at the city. When I joined the city council in 97, we were getting roughly fifty percent of our money from the property tax and thirty percent from state aid, local aid, and it's now sixty-one percent on the backs of the property owners and seventeen percent from the state, even though we're the economic engine for all the money that's generated to make their programs go. And when we look at the budget resubmission, there's something else we have to look at, the fact that we were working with the administration and there were painful cuts to be made on programmatic services, but what couldn't we cut? We couldn't cut our obligations with regard to pension benefits, health benefits, debt service, et cetera. Those continue to grow, and it's an alarming trend for the future because if it continues to go in the direction it is, we're not going to be able to sustain anywhere near the level of services that people expect and deserve from us as a municipal government. You know, everybody's talked about, I think what's happened over the last several years with the financial stewardship of this city, and you know, Lisa is to be commended. We do give her a hard time, and frankly, she deserves a hard time, but she's also to be commended, as is the mayor, for the financial leadership that they've shown as the state was slowly walking away. We've continued to be able to protect most of core services here. And we have a budget that basically, we've reduced the number of layoffs in the resubmission from the original submission by added hard work. And Counsel Feeney is correct and others to congratulate those labor unions that partnered with us. The Boston City Council is taking a seven percent pay cut, not pay cut, but budget cut, doing its part. And shame on the bigger unions. You wonder why there are layoffs in the school department? Ask the teachers' union. They're going along merrily, along, not sacrificing while everybody else is, and I've said that to their face, and I'll say it again. We're all in this together, and some people chose not to be in it. Is the budget perfect? No. Did we get everything we wanted to get? No. Is it far better than almost every other city in the country and every other city in the Commonwealth because of financial leadership here? Yes. We're continuing to work on the issue of municipal protective services. That is unresolved. It's a collective bargaining issue, but we're trying to resolve it. We lost some people in the graphic arts department in this budget, not because we didn't want to keep them, but frankly, because they can't compete with some of the outside providers for printing services based on the equipment that they have. We're going to continue discussions with the administration in the 2010 fiscal year about that department and moving it forward. I brought up an issue of school transportation. I made the suggestion that I would be willing to offer a cut of three-point-five million dollars in school transportation. I backed off of that because it was pointed out that the school budget already assumes a three-point-five million-dollar cut based on better routing. And I'm going to be in contact with Carol Johnson and the Transportation Unit about moving forward to find additional cuts in this fiscal year. The park rangers were restored. It was a collaborative effort by many people in this body, yourself, Mr. President, and our colleagues, and the Emerald Necklace Conservancy, which stepped up and put forward an agreement to fund not only the park rangers' horses, but also a seasonal component, additional bodies. I can't say the same happened with the mounted unit. We're not able to save it. It's going to fall, and I feel badly about that as the Chair of Public Safety because I believe there are true positive element in the public safety equation in this city. But I do have an agreement from the Police Department that basically says that, and I'll just read paraphrase a letter, the agreement of the horses going to New York and to Plymouth basically says that there is a provision in the agreement for the return of the horses should the city's financial situation change to allow the city the option of reconstituting the unit. NYPD will put the horses into regular service in New York, but they have committed themselves to returning to the horses to Boston should the mounted unit be reconstituted. It is my hope to fight for, as we look at finances coming in, a way to reconstitute that unit. Everybody doesn't get everything they ask for, and we know this. This is my 13th budget. It's painful sometimes. You can't cover every cost, especially in this climate, but there's commendations to be made for all of us working together, commendations to the administration for the changes that they made from the original submission and moving forward together collectively. I'm sure we're going to meet most, if not all, of the needs of the people that send us here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Chair recognizes Counsel Conley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by just acknowledging the great work of my colleague, my first-term colleague, Counsel Seomo, and all of his hard work and his countless hours that he put in, and I know we've all acknowledged that, and I just want to join that chorus because it's incredibly well-deserved. I also want to acknowledge the hard work of Sheila and Chelsea and everything they do in helping get us prepared to do our best on this budget, and it couldn't happen without them. I'm going to vote for this budget, and it's tough times, and I don't think there are any grand victories here for anyone, and I don't think there could be, just given the tough times. It's the hand that the citizens of the city and the city government has been dealt and that, you know, every municipality deals with right now. But I'm glad in this budget that Boston continues to go green with single-stream expansion, the Renew Boston program that will continue weatherization and the launch of solar throughout the city. I'm glad that the mayor has launched a new climate change initiative that I think will take us to the next wave of leading the urban charge across this nation to make sure that we reduce and fight and combat global climate change. And I'm particularly glad that this fiscal year will bring, hopefully, the launch of a shared bike program that, you know, that I worked on closely with the administration as well as others in this body. I'm glad that Boston will continue to go green through this budget. I'm glad that there's the continued commitment to safe streets, which is where quality of life starts. If we don't have safe streets, we can't have any quality of life, and I'm glad there is that continued commitment to community policing, though I know that there were really hard choices that had to be made around public safety. But I'm glad that that cornerstone remains there, that we've minimized the loss of police officers on the street, particularly when it comes to that most great challenge that we face of kids, shooting kids. There is no greater challenge in this city, and we've done a good job in seeing that homicide rate drop, and the police commissioner and the mayor should be commended for that, and I know they wouldn't disagree, and no one in this body would disagree when I say, but we have to continue to fight and make that commitment because not one child is acceptable to lose their life on our streets. So I'm glad that commitment remains there, and I think we see that in this budget despite those tough choices. And I go from safe streets to that vital link and that part of the budget that I focused most of my energy on, which is our schools, and making sure that our children have that pathway to opportunity that keeps them away from the streets. And I want to thank the Chair again because he gave me a great discretion on those hearings, the many hearings with Boston Public Schools and allowing me to help shape the agenda for those hearings, and I thank you for giving me that leeway. And I also want to thank all of the parents, and this really started for them in January and December, and I know all of us heard from parents, BPS parents out there, and I just want to say thank you to them, and I can say this, and I don't think we ever say this in our hearings, I know they're watching at home, and they watched all of our budget hearings at home because they would call and email afterwards and say, why didn't you ask this? Or I'm glad you asked that, or thanks for asking this, but could you ask this next time? And they were, they were the people giving all of us so much of the information and the concerns of what was being experienced in that classroom through their children and on those, you know, for them directly being part of the life of those schools. And again, it's, there's no great victory here, but I'm glad that we've been able to minimize as a body and working with parents and principals and with BPS and with the administration, minimize teacher layoffs to what I believe when they start the school year next year will be under twenty teacher layoffs. And so I'm really glad about that, and I will just close with this. I think there was that, for me, that key piece in every day was to focus on trying to minimize those teacher layoffs and stay in touch with the parents, but I think we need to have a broader global vision. And we talk about it in this body all the time, and this is the point where I usually go to school transportation, but I'm not going to. I want to talk about it from a broader standpoint. I don't think that the failures in BPS are the fault of teachers, because we have great teachers in the classroom, or principals, because we have great principals, or even the administration, although I do think that Court Street can lose itself and its own bureaucracy and protect the status quo, but I see Superintendent Johnson and I see someone who knows our schools and is dedicated to improving them, and I see the talented team around her. And so I don't point the finger there, but I think we have to, rather than thinking about pointing a finger, just look and say, forty percent non-graduation from high school, something's not working. The fact that for the sixty percent who do graduate, less than half will get a college degree within seven years, something's not working. And we need to focus on the positives and the successes in BPS because there are many, and I want to say that, but we can't be afraid to look at what's not working and say we need to be bold to try and change these things for the kids in Boston. And I think that means breaking the conception from which we come at it right now, which is the fight for every dollar, and say, what is it that we need to do before we ever get to that point to make sure that when we're sending money there, it's working? And so with that, Mr. President, I will close my remarks and just say that I think Lisa Signori and her team are owed a great deal of credit because the lines of communication are always open, and while I keep saying there's no grand victory, we've been able to get a good budget in incredibly tough times because of their long-term policies over a course of budgets and over many years where they were so prudent, and that's why we've been able to minimize the pain in these incredibly difficult times, and I think they should be commended for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Conley. Chair recognizes Counsel Chuck Turner. Chair recognizes Counsel Chuck Turner.
Thank you. I, let me begin by just thanking Counsel Siomo for the excellent work that he did and his, I know if I can take my experience, I think he worked with each of us to really make sure that he understood our needs and concerns and was pulling us together by dealing with each of us and then looking at how that fit together. Everyone has also talked about the work that was done by our team, you know, Chelsea Harris and Sheila Temple, and the work that Lisa Signori did, and Karen Connor and Molly Dunford. I was, I was not going to, I was not going to say anything, primarily because I thought there wasn't much to add. That is, that I agree, we, you know, the administration and the School Department have done a really commendable job in a very, very, very tough situation and given us a budget that, that in this situation, I think we can be, can be proud of doing a good job with less resources than we need. The reason why I decided to speak was that I thought it's important that we talk with the public about the whole issue of less resources, because while I think we've done a good job of managing our resources as a city during the 10 years I've been on a council, I think the reality is that the state has failed us and the federal government has failed us. Let me give you a couple of very concrete numbers just to help you understand why I stand up and make this kind of negative statement. We have a deficit of $500 million in terms of school repairs. $500 million deficit. We can generate about $33 million a year with our bonding capacity for investment in the schools. That 33 million is there, 35 some years is there because of a good fiscal management. But when you look at the reality that we have a $500 million deficit, not just for new schools, you know, our new computer centers, we're talking about bricks and martyrs, windows, sealing the, sealing the bricks, replacing heating and ventilation systems, $500 million, and we have 33 million to invest each year. This can't go on. This is just, this is absurd. There is not one dollar that comes from the federal government in terms of helping us with the infrastructure, and you think it's not Boston's, it's not a bad management problem in Boston. Nationally, the AFT, the American Federation of Teachers, projects a deficit across the country of $300 billion. $300 billion deficit in terms of infrastructure. We're not even talking about monies for the education of the children. We're talking about creating, having buildings that are safe and sound. The Public Housing Authority, a billion-dollar deficit, 10% of our population, our children, the poorest in our city, a billion dollars is needed. Yes? Where did I find out that number? Bill McGonigal told me four years ago when I said, "What can we do at Whittier Street to really improve the capital?" He said, "Let me let you know what the reality is that we're facing." Four years, in 2004, six years ago now, five years ago, we lost 700 teachers. Why? Bad money management on the part of the city? No. The state cut our budget from 28%, kept, cut the monies coming in from 28% to 22% five years ago. 28 to 22, and we'd lost 700 teachers and about 300 to 400 city employees. We are in a crisis. We are in a crisis, and it's time that we need to stand up and say to our federal government and say to our state government that we cannot stand the fact that you do not care about the people of our cities. There is no other way to explain the situation that we're in and the money that they have. I saw the state legislature give cut after cut after cut to businesses, and then when they ran out of money, who did they come to, to absorb the cuts? They came to us. We've done a good job, but unless we can find a way to get a state legislature and a federal government that is concerned about the people of our cities, we're going to go to hell in a handbasket. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Turner. Chair recognizes Counsel President Michael Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Appreciate the opportunity. I wasn't going to speak either, but I wanted to come down really for the main reason of thanking Counsel Siomo for his work. I've always said about Counsel Siomo, he is a workhorse, he's not a show horse. He works hard, he shows up, he's in his office. He is a hard-working city councillor, and his district is lucky to have him, and we're lucky to have you as our Ways and Means Chair, and I am very proud of the decision that I made to make Counsel Siomo the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. So since I'm down here and I have a few minutes left, I'll just use the time to say that I believe we should pass this budget. I believe that all of my colleagues and the previous speaker and all of you have very eloquently stated why we should pass this budget. You know, Counsel Linnahan, you talked about a $100 million cut we have from the state. That's 5% of our entire budget. It's miraculous that this budget actually can do some of the things it does, as you've all described. Couple other things, the fact that we're level, that we're level funding our youth jobs for the summer, it's miraculous, with some help from the federal government on that. It's miraculous that our police, with the work of that union, should Tommy Neen, and I believe Tommy Neen will be successful, that we won't have to lay off police officers, subject to his successful efforts at the federal level. That we're able to add classes, Counsel Lamontina, to schools that were oversubscribed because they were doing well. Miraculous. Let me be clear on one point that I have been clear on consistently. It was a poor, and it is a poor, decision of the administration to remove the mounted unit. I believe it will decrease the effectiveness of our police department, and I believe that it will take from the brand of our city. I am committed and will commit myself to reconstitute the mounted unit of the police, which the provisions that you've articulated, Mr. Vice President, allow us to do so. I will endeavor with you and others to bring them back. I'm very pleased that we have the types of citizens in this city who have stepped forward on the park rangers to keep their mounted units, but I am disappointed in that decision. I do think it would be short-sighted of me to reject an entire $2.4 billion budget because of that decision. We all don't always agree on our decisions. But mostly, Mr. Vice President, just wanted to thank Counsel Siomo for the good work that he's done, as well as the Chair and Vice Chair of the Education Committee as well, and our staff, and our friends at the administration. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chair recognizes City Councilor John Tobin.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. As I say, all has been said, but it hasn't been said by everybody, so I'll end it here, I suppose. I just wanted to, except for a couple of things, everybody has recognized all the important players, and I do the same, grateful for their hard work through the years and their contributions. I do also want to recognize Kerry Jordan, who's kind of the man behind the curtains there and who films all our good sides, if there are any, constantly during all the meetings and hearings, and also to Counsel Siomo, obviously, for your great work as Chair, but also to your individual staff members and their hard work in your office to get through this process. As everybody has said, it's a $2.4 billion budget. Not all is perfect, particularly when it comes to the shortcomings and the shortcomings, as I think my good friend from Roxbury indicated, how oftentimes the state and the federal government ignores cities, and we're certainly no exception. And I certainly see it as Chair of Arts and Humanities for the eight years I've been here, and our arts and culture in the city and our programming are often subject to the whims of how the legislature, how the state government feels, and they treat arts and culture as a luxury and not as a necessity and something that should be part of the core curriculum, not just of our schools, but should be a constant in our neighborhoods. And you can't have decent programming in terms of arts and culture, you can't have it steady, it is a constant fluctuation of what they decide to send down for funding every single year, and we have to go through, and our arts groups and our cultural groups suffer because of that. But they're supposed to, just because they're creative people, they're supposed to manage. Well, I think the time has come, and I think this body has been a leader along with the administration in telling the state government that we're on the ballot, just like they are every two years, and that we need new revenue streams, and we ought to have the autonomy to be able to vote on those revenue streams and approve those because we are on the ballot, just like that. We're not appointed, and if we make both a fee increases or tax increases to help our citizens in so many arenas, education and the environment and the public safety and the arts, then we should ought to be held accountable. But clearly, when our population, which is just shy of 600,000 people, swells, doubles Monday through Friday, because we are the economic engine, not just of the state, but I would argue, and I think many would agree, of New England, with our police, our fire, our DPW, our code enforcement, our inspectional services, and we get nothing back from the state, very little from the state in return, and when you see the squabble about Sale Boston, which I think is going to be a fantastic event, and the city gets blamed because the organizers owe us $1 million from eight years ago, and the state reaps all the, most of the profit from that, I don't see how, how do we lose that argument? How do we lose that argument? We have to, there have to be wholesale changes in terms of home rule. Every time we go to draw our breath in the city, we should not have to ask the legislature or the governor for permission. I'm sorry. There are 351 cities and towns in this Commonwealth, and it's about time we recognize, we cannot have a constant Big Brother up on Beacon Hill and asking for permission on such ridiculous things as, we want to change how we do green tickets now. Green tickets, we want to have people, citizens be able to appeal those tickets like they do orange parking tickets with an appeals process downstairs at City Hall. Instead, the green tickets go to housing court, and we have to ask the legislature for permission to change that in terms of, it just, it drives us crazy. I do want to say there have been some victories with this process, particularly as it relates to early education. There were cuts proposed for a bunch of early education centers and after-school programs in the city, and I want to thank my colleagues, Counsel Conley and Counsel Feeny and Counsel Consavo, and many of you who attended those hearings, at the Murphy School over in Dorchester, Counsel Flaherty, many of you who were there, Counsel Yoon was the one in West Roxbury that staved off those cuts, and I want to thank the administration for hearing loud and clear, not just the parents of the current kids, children who were in those programs, but the alums of those programs, many kids who came back to say, you know, that those programs provided a foundation for them and solid footing for them later on in life. So we are grateful for that. I also, as Counsel Conley mentioned, the Chair of Education mentioned, it was the parents, really, who organized early on in this process and saw the devastating cuts that were proposed for the Boston Public Schools. And while there are some cuts, I don't think they nearly are what they would have been had it not been for the meetings and fora put together by parents out there, independent of the school committee, independent of the administration or us, got there and met in living rooms and in church basements and all across the city, and really held us as their elected officials accountable to minimize those cuts. So in closing, just want to say I'll be, well, I'm not perfect, and they never are. I do think there are some really outstanding people in this building who have helped minimize those cuts and help keep the city moving forward, and I'll be voting for the budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Siomo moves passage of the operating budget, Docket 0865. All those in favor say aye, opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0865 has been passed.
Got the vote.
Madam Clerk? Counsel Siomo doubts the vote. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll call?
Counsel Siomo?
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley?
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consavo?
Yes.
Counselor Consavo, yes. Counselor Feeny?
Yes.
Counselor Feeny, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
No.
Counselor Flaherty, no. Counselor Lamontina?
Yes.
Counselor Lamontina, yes. Counselor Linnahan?
Yes.
Counselor Linnahan, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Tobin, yes. Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Turner, yes. Counselor Yancey?
Yes.
Counselor Yancey, yes. Counselor Yoon? 11 in the affirmative, one in the negative one.
Docket 0865 has passed. Counselor, Madam Clerk, would you please read Docket 866?
Yes, Docket 0866.
Counselor, Counsel Siomo, I apologize.
Number 0866 from the green sheets, please.
My four years of Ways and Means.
I know. All hands high.
Docket 0866.
There are no objections from the committee on Ways and Means. Please read Docket 866.
We already read it, I thought.
Oh, you did. It's already before us.
Yep. I retransmit here with an appropriation for the Boston Public Schools for fiscal year 2010 in the amount of $817.1 million submitted pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 224 of the Acts of 1936, as amended by Chapter 190 of the Acts of 1982, as further amended by Chapter 701 of the Acts of 1986, Chapter 613 of the Acts of 1987, and Chapter 108 of the Acts of 1991.
Counsel Siomo, do you wish to speak on this?
Yeah, very briefly. First, I want to thank Counsel Tobin for acknowledging my omissions and my thank yous to Kerry Jordan, who filmed every hearing, hours and hours of hearings. He deserves my thanks and praise, as well as Ann Hesbraga as well, and especially my own staff. They have picked up a lot of the slack because of the hours that I had to put into this. And then, very briefly, I did want to mention the work that Lisa did, literally within days of resubmission. We had to bridge another $32 million gap without a single layoff. I think that is worth noting. One single layoff, $32 million within the past three days, and again, that is due to the fiscal management of the city of Boston. I also want to point out in our most recent education hearing, originally there were 138 teachers scheduled to be laid off. We now find out that four permanent teachers as of right now, and only 20 to 30 provisionals are being laid off, and those numbers might still go down. So again, everything has been said, but I think we're very fortunate in these very difficult financial times to have minimized the layoffs and protected the services of the city of Boston going forward. So I also urge passage of this education budget, too.
Thank you. Counsel Siomo moves passage of Docket 0866. All those in favor say aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it.
Doubt the vote.
Docket 0866. Counsel Siomo doubts the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please?
Counsel Siomo?
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counselor Conley?
Yes.
Counselor Conley, yes. Counselor Consavo?
Yes.
Counselor Consavo, yes. Counselor Feeny?
Yes.
Counselor Feeny, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
No.
Counselor Flaherty, no. Counselor Lamontina?
Yes.
Counselor Lamontina, yes. Counselor Linnahan?
Yes.
Counselor Linnahan, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Tobin, yes. Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Turner, yes. Counselor Yancey? Yes. 11 in the affirmative, one in the negative one.
That matter has passed. Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty for what?
President, my button was signaled to speak and to explain why I'm voting no on this docket. We're failing our children, especially our ELL students. We have a growing achievement gap, and we have a dropout crisis that we can't get a hold of, and we're shortchanging our student athletes, and it's all a result of the lack of data-driven decision-making. You know, whether we're talking about the budget hearings that I attended where nobody could clarify the scope of the initiative to tackle the dropout crisis and to explain to me what grade we start tracking students, whether it's the fact that over the last decade, English-language learners have fell through the cracks at alarming rates, and we're finally getting around to taking a look at a systematic problem where parents were opting to...
getting around to taking a look at a systematic problem where parents were opting to, were opting out of ELL because they were not given the appropriate options. During the budget hearings, not once, not once, did someone from the school district or the administration explain in detail why we are only using five fewer buses today than we did 10 years ago, despite the fact that we're transporting 5,000 less students. And let's talk a little bit about, obviously, school sports, or I should say, the lack thereof, poor facilities. One described by a student as the equivalent of playing in a toilet bowl. Talk about no equipment, not enough teams, not enough coaches. And when you think about that issue, it's not just about education. It also talks about two other issues, or it invites to other issues, which is youth violent crime and also public health. Whether you want to talk about students that are obese, or whether you want to talk about kids that are joining gangs, getting involved with drugs and alcohol, and carrying weapons. We all know it. We all grew up in the neighborhoods of Boston, or at least most of us, and sports keeps kids in school, keeps them off the streets, away from drugs and alcohol, and opens up opportunities around scholarships, or even the possibility of having a kid from one of our neighborhoods drafted by a professional draft. So for the aforementioned reasons, once again, we could do better. And I'm coming at this not just as a citywide council, but as a parent with children in the school system. And the hearings that we've all attended around mold and asthma and pests and rodents and other irritants, where decisions about which schools get prioritized and which ones don't, again, fails because we don't have, you know, a tracking system where that data is put forward and examined, and it's out in the open. So clearly, that deals with capital issues, but just the overall flavor that we could be doing better for our children, especially those that attend the Boston Public Schools. And I wanted to at least have it noted and state it publicly why, you know, that I'm not supporting the school budget. Thank you, Mr. President.
Sorry about missing that. Counsel Yun wishes to be recorded in the affirmative on Docket 0866. Hearing no objection, he shall so be added. Counsel Yun wishes to be recorded in the negative on Docket 0865. Hearing no objection, he shall so be added. Chair recognizes Counsel Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to pull dockets number 0497 through 0504 on page two of the green sheets.
Madam Clerk, please read the dockets.
Docket 0497. I hereby transmit for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $10,985,000 for critical facility repairs, HVAC at Charlestown High School, HVAC at English High School, masonry repairs at various schools, roof replacement at various schools, windows at Marshall School. But you want to go?
I will do the?
Want to read all of them?
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Feeny, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina? Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross?
Yes.
Council Ross, yes. Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yancey, yes. Council Yun?
Yes.
Council Yun, yes. Read for a second, second time and pass.
Read for the second time and pass. Clerk will read the next docket.
0498. I transmit here with for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $4,440,000 for the Murphy Community Center, critical facility repairs, 201 Rivermeers Street, critical facility repairs, Finland Building Elevator.
Clerk will call a roll.
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Feeny, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross?
Yes.
Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Turner, yes. Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yancey, yes. Council Yun?
Yes.
Council Yun, yes.
Docket 0498 has received its second reading and has passed. Clerk will read the next docket.
Docket 0499. I transmit here with for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $1,845,000 for the capital order attached, Draper Playground, General Parks Improvement, Lavish Count Park, Martin Playground, park equipment, Ringgold Park, schoolyard improvements.
Clerk will call a roll on Docket 0499.
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Feeny, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross? Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Turner, yes. Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yun?
Yes.
That's 12.
Docket number 0499 has been read a second time and has been passed. Clerk will read the next docket.
Docket 0500. I transmit here with for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $3,385,000. The capital order is apparatus driver training simulator and fire equipment.
Clerk will call a roll on Docket 0500.
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Council Connolly?
Yes.
Council Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Feeny, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross?
Yes.
Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Turner, yes. Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yancey, yes. Council Yun?
Docket 0500 has been read a second time and has passed. Clerk will read the next docket.
Dockets 0501. I transmit here with for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $12,120,000 for the capital council order attached, ADA slash AAB pedestrian ramps, Commonwealth Avenue Mall lighting, street lighting installation, Washington Beach housing infrastructure.
Clerk will call a roll on Docket 0501.
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Feeny, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross?
Yes.
Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Turner, yes. Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yancey, yes. Council Yun?
Yes.
Council Yun, yes.
Docket 0501 has been read a second time and has passed. Clerk will read the next docket.
Docket 0502. I transmit here with for your approval appropriation order in the amount of $15,655,000 for the capital council order attached, administration and finance initiatives, computer-aided dispatch, core technology infrastructure, CRM WOM and call center technology, enterprise geographic information system, public safety systems implementation.
Clerk will call a roll on Docket 0502.
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Feeny, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross?
Yes.
Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Turner, yes. Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yancey, yes. Council Yun?
Yes.
Council Yun, yes.
Docket 0502 has received its second reading and has passed. Clerk will read the next docket.
Docket 0503. I transmit here with for your approval and appropriation order in the amount of $305,000 for street tree planting.
Clerk will call a roll on?
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross?
Yes.
Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Turner, yes. Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yancey, yes. Council Yun?
Yes.
Council Yun, yes.
Docket 0503 has received its second reading and has passed. Clerk will read the next docket.
Docket 0504. I transmit here with for your approval and order authorizing the city of Boston to enter into one or more lease purchase or installment sales agreements in fiscal year 2010 in an amount not to exceed $8,800,000, and in fiscal year 2011 in an amount not to exceed $10,560,000. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment in furtherance of their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes commuter equip, pardon me, computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles and trailers, firefighting equipment, office equipment, photocopying equipment, telecommunications equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, street lighting installation, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing.
Clerk will call a roll on Docket 0504.
Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Siomo, yes. Councilor Connolly?
Yes.
Councilor Connolly, yes. Council Consavo?
Yes.
Council Consavo, yes. Council Feeny?
Yes.
Council Feeny, yes. Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council Murphy?
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Ross?
Yes.
Council Ross, yes. Council Tobin?
Yes.
Council Tobin, yes. Council Turner?
Yes.
Council Turner, yes. Council Yancey?
Yes.
Council Yancey, yes. Council Yun?
Yes.
Council Yun, yes.
Docket 0504 has been read a second time and has passed. Madam Clerk, Counsel Ross wishes to be recorded in the affirmative in Docket number 0498 through 0504.
They haven't called us yet.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Chair recognizes Counsel Siomo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish to pull docket number 0867 from the green sheets, page 16 of 16.
Hearing no objections from the members of the Ways and Means Committee. Madam Clerk, would you please read that?
I transmit here with for your approval acceptance and acceptance of the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 23B, Section 20, to set up a special trust fund, the other post-employment benefits, OBEP, Liability Trust Fund, the sum total of $20 million.
Counselor Siomo moves, Counselor Siomo moves passage of docket 0867. All those in favor say aye. Those saying nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0867 has been passed. Counselor Siomo doubts the vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Siomo.
Yes.
Counselor Siomo, yes. Counselor Connolly?
Yes.
Counselor Connolly, yes. Counselor Consalvo?
Yes.
Counselor Consalvo, yes. Counselor Feeny?
Yes.
Counselor Feeny, yes. Counselor Flaherty?
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Lamatina?
Yes.
Counselor Lamatina, yes. Counselor Linehan?
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Ross?
Yes.
Counselor Ross, yes. Counselor Tobin?
Yes.
Counselor Tobin, yes. Counselor Turner?
Yes.
Counselor Turner, yes. Counselor Yancey?
Yes.
Counselor Yancey, yes. Counselor Yun?
Yes.
Counselor Yun, yes. Thirteen in the appointments.
That matter has passed. Motions, orders, and resolutions, and Counselor Turner moves that docket 0881 be taken out of order. Any hearing, no objection. It is so out of order. Mr. Assistant Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, our Chair of the, our Ways and Means Committees began the discussion saying that tough times require tough decisions. And I think we all spoke to that as we get reflected on the budget. But tough times requiring tough decisions also require that legislators use their capacity to make sure the decisions that are being made are fair. This resolution challenges a decision that has been made by the state legislature that I think is very, very unfair, and I hope you would support this resolution being sent to the governor to ask for his support and help. The family emergency shelter in the state had a requirement that families, a family of four that had an income of $29,000, $29,000 a year or more not be allowed in those shelters. I have questions about that restriction. But unfortunately, what has happened is that in developing this year's budget, the restriction was brought to a lower level. Families that earn, have incomes of $24,000 a year are no, and are no longer eligible for family housing. The limit is 115 percent of the federal poverty rate, which means that the highest level, the highest amount of income that a family of four can have and be eligible to go into a state-financed emergency housing shelter is $23,300. If, if you are a family of four making 20, having an income of $24,000 a year, that means that you have $2,000 a month gross. So we understand that we're talking about $1,500 a net, a month net. And those families that are working, that are working, because you can't have that kind of income and be on government assistance. So we're talking about the working poor who earn $24,000 a year or more, who no, who no longer will be able to be eligible for emergency family shelters. I talked with people in the legislature and administration and finance, just trying to understand, why, why would you do this? And they're saying, well, the, the caseload is so heavy that they feel that they need to restrict it to the poorest of the poor. How do you make a decision between a family that has $20,000 a year coming in and a family that has 24? A family of four getting, having $24,000 a year is part of the poorest of the poor. Difficult decision. You know, and I'm not saying that they just did it lightly or cavalierly, but the reality, when you think about the decision that they made, they're basically saying to the working poor, maybe it shouldn't work. Right? That is, think, think about it. If you're a family, if you're, have a family of four, and you're in Boston and you're not able to leave Boston for whatever reason, you don't have enough money to buy anything, you know, on the, on the public market. If you don't have a Section 8 subsidy, and we know those are very, very scarce these days, then, then what do you do? Well, if you're thinking about how you support your family, you have to think about, maybe it's better for me not to work. Maybe it's better for me to try to go on public assistance and get food stamps. At least I can have shelter. It's an insane, from my perspective, it's an insane restriction because it says to those people who are going out there and working every day, that because you don't have enough income to meet the market, but you aren't so poor that we feel we can afford to give you shelter, you just have to suck it up and try to figure out, maybe find a friend's car to, to sleep in. You know what I mean? It's just, it's just a very, very unwise move. And I think it would be positive for us to, to, in the name of the people of Boston, because we have so many poor here. And so many poor who are working, who are saying, I'm going to get out there and work, even if I'm not bringing enough money in to really provide all we need. This, this is an insult to, I think, the working people of Boston, and we ought to say to the governor, please, see what you could do to eliminate that restriction. The House eliminated the restriction, the, how, any restrictions. However, the state senate brought it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Connolly. Purpose of adding his name, Chair recognizes Counselor Feeny.
Me?
Do you have your button pressed?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, Counselor Feeny. Sorry, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to commend my good colleague and to say that just this past week and a half, I have been dealing with someone who is desperately trying to get her life back on track and doesn't make enough money to sustain herself and her family, but from the other perspective, makes too much money to be able to benefit in any way from any support and subsidy that would actually allow her to get on her feet and, and really save her family. And, you know, this is a daily, weekly occurrence in many of our communities throughout the city. And I, I commend you, and I, I do understand the plight of the state right now, but, you know, it's always the little guy that gets hurt. It's always those invisible people that it's easy to cut them from the budget, or it's easy to cut where it's not seen. And, you know, I think it is incumbent upon us in elected office to be the eyes and the presence of those invisible people. Thank you. So I'd like my name added, Mr. President.
So Madam Clerk, please add the names of Counselor Connolly and Counselor Feeny and Counselor Tobin. And Counselor Yancey and Counselor Yun. Chair recognizes Counselor Lamatina.
Thank you. I'd like to take this opportunity to commend Counselor Turner.
Open also.
I have worked in a shelter before with homeless families, and it's ridiculous that some families, you know, that are making $2,000 a month, that can't be housed if there's an emergency in their family. And particularly in Boston, where rents are $1,500, $1,000, $1,500. But no one really gets me. The money that we spend for families to put them up in motels and put them up in shelters, we're spending a lot of money. It's cheaper for us to give them a voucher so they can find housing in a neighborhood or somewhere, you know, but to put them up in a shelter or in a motel, it's a lot of money. So I, I think that, having worked with the homeless for many years, that we're doing something wrong. We're spending too much money at these emergency shelters and these motels where we could be probably saving money if we just helped the family with a housing voucher. And that's something that the governor should be looking at, not put more restrictions on poor families. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you add Counselor Lamatina's name to the matter? Would you also add Counselor Flaherty's? And Counselor Linehan and Murphy? So that was Flaherty, Lamatina, Linehan, Murphy, Siomo, also myself. Turner now moves, and also Counselor Consalvo's. Could you add Counselor Consalvo's name?
Yes.
Counselor Turner now moves suspension and adoption of the resolution. All those in favor say aye. Those saying nay. The ayes have it. The rules have been suspended and the resolution has been adopted. Mr. Assistant Clerk, the docket 0879, please.
Docket number 0879, Counselor Yun offered the following order approving a petition for a special law relative to a planning department in the city of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counselor Yun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Realize this is not a new idea, something that my colleagues have, have seen before and is, has been an issue in our city for years. This legislation would undo the enabling legislation that created the, the Boston Redevelopment Authority back in 1960. And I think we need to recognize that Boston is not the same city in 2009 than it was in 1960, especially at a time when politically things were different at that time in the city. There was a planning department at that time in city government that was abolished and replaced by this entity called the Boston Redevelopment Authority, whose mission was to create a tax base, a commercial tax base, and not burden taxpayers at that time. I think we have to recognize that we're, it's different now. We're, that, that was 50 years ago. And now it's time for our city to get in, you know, to come, you know, to the same realization that other cities have before us, that planning needs to be a function of city government. And what this would do is separate planners from developers, because this is where we consistently get into trouble, and this is why our city has a, has a Byzantine, ineffective, and confusing, and for a lot of people infuriating development process. Let, we need to, as a city, just catch up to the rest of the country in the way they do planning, and that's by having it a department like the school department, like the fire department, like the Department of Public Works, and ensure that we do planning for people. And so this is, of all, the, the aches and, and the, and the hand, hand wringing and the anxiety and the, and the pain that we've experienced of cutting a few million dollars here, a few million dollars there, the BRA is sitting on billions of dollars of real estate and property. They own it. They own the rights to it. This is how they make their money. This is how they make the deals with the developers. And for us to ignore that fact while we're over here on this side just fighting over some crumbs, that makes absolutely no sense. And we've clearly made our best efforts to, to bring some transparency to the BRA. All of us have asked questions, and the questionnaire comes back to us. We are unable to give you this information at this time. We're working on it. Simple things like, how much property do you own? What property have we sold to you for how much and what do you use it for? Things like that. Where is all the money that is, that is tucked away in accounts that we have no access to or no recording of? These are basic questions. And so this is clearly the, the elephant in the room when it comes to having our city government be a functional city government that really works toward the, the betterment of the people who live here and not those who finance this, it's very much like a military industrial complex between the BRA and developers, this other kind of entity that works for private interests and then takes away what we can get from those private interests and says, we'll, we'll have some staff do a community process for you over here, because we know that you need to talk to people about what this piece of land should look like, whether it's the Greenway, Filling's Basement, or, or your neighborhood. And so this is a chance to, to get this right. It, I think, you know, the, the time is now, especially as we're undergoing a, a, some reflection on what government, government's role is in our country. We should be doing it in our city, and this, I think, is, is long overdue, but it needs to be done soon as possible. So, Mr. President, I'm looking forward to a speedy hearing on this, on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Turner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're all very well aware of the problems that happen when you don't have regulators focused on keeping balance in our economic system. I think the runaway escalation of costs in the city of Boston is a result of the fact that we don't have a balanced system of government to regulate the power and strength of the development community with the needs of the working people of this, this city. When I came to, when I settled in Boston, 1966, you could get an apartment for $100 a month. I bought a house for $7,000 in 1969. I bought a house for $7,000. $7,000 in 1969. Now look at where, where we are. Why, how did that escalation take place? It took place because we had an agency that had a mandate. As the director told, the former director told me, my mandate is to make sure that the economy of the city of Boston continues to rise. What's there to make sure that in that rise it doesn't drive the people of the city away? The working people of the city, the people who don't have those professional incomes? It's essential to, to the, a healthy city is a, is a city that has a process that allows a diversity of people to be there, not just racial diversity, but economic diversity at all, as well. The BRA, the, the legislation that created the BRA was designed, I think, to drive out those that they didn't felt, feel were acceptable in the new Boston, and they have done that. It's time for us to stand up in the name of the people, and the first step would be to reverse this legislation and create a planning department that would balance the power of the BRA. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Consalvo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I cannot support this legislation yet. I, there's just too many questions, concerns, and problems I see with it, three of which I'll mention, and then I'll offer a little perspective. The first problem I have with this is we're creating a new agency. This legislation is creating a new city agency on a day where we voted on a budget to lay people off. And in an economic climate where we're laying people off. So my first question is, what is the cost to create a new agency? How many employees? What would be the impact on our budget, our pension system, our health insurance, all that kind of thing? I just don't even see how the timing is appropriate, first off. Secondly, and the third whereas, where it says, "The BRA became and is now the single agency responsible for both citywide planning and development regulation of the city, a conflict in interest which invariably favors the development mission." Says who? Based on what statistics, data? How is this driven? I don't necessarily disagree with it, maybe it does, but says who? And the third piece of this is, this legislation takes power that the mayor has, and we have lack of control over that, and gives the authority to the mayor. I don't, I don't see that it goes from the mayor to the mayor. So the concern, so being able to hold a check and balance, I mean, if it was coming to us and we were going to be the planning agency, and it was oversight of us, then I can see that. But I don't see the real difference in taking it from someone who already has the control to somebody who was going to maintain the control. Again, all will be answered, I'm sure, during the hearing process, but it just leaves those questions. But the perspective I want to bring on this is this. Look, I get that the BRA has problems. I get that they have a lot of problems, like a lot of city agencies and state agencies. They need to do business better. They need to be more transparent. They need to do all sorts of things with their department. But is ending the department the answer? Is throwing out the baby with the bathwater the answer? That case has to strongly be made to me. Sure, they can do things better. I'm the first one to admit it. I also get the politics of this kind of thing, all right? We're all politicians, and we're in politics, so I get that piece of it. But as we're framing this debate, it has, we have to be fair, that both sides of the debate have to be discussed and that we can't just, in the hysteria of being anti-BRA, not admit that the BRA actually does some good things. And that the BRA has a proven track record of doing good things that have been good for the city. And I also would argue that if you want to be a check and balance on the BRA, you can. And I would argue that I have been in areas that the BRA has pertained to me. So what do I mean? How did I have to get involved? How did I have to act as a strong check on planning and be a balance against the BRA? An issue in my campaign, the rezoning of Rosendale, which hadn't been done in 40 years, was undertaken. We heard it loud and clear. The BRA led the planning effort in Rosendale, but it was driven by an impact advisory group, an IAG made up of community members, who through us and their elected officials, held the BRA accountable and drove the process and wrote the zoning code. And if you talk to the folks in Rosendale who participated in this hugely successful rezoning, they would tell you the opposite, that they think the BRA did a fantastic job in rezoning Rosendale. Again, doesn't speak to the totality of the package, but is an important point to bring up as we're framing this discussion. So successful, Hyde Park said, "We want to rezone the neighborhood, and we want the same autonomy, and we wanted a community-driven process, and we want it to be open and transparent, and we want an IAG, and we want the community to write the code," and now they are doing it in Hyde Park, using the BRA as the tool to do that. When Harvard University wanted to expand onto Weld Hill and Rosendale with a multimillion-dollar research facility, and the BRA was supportive of that effort and was going to try to jam that through, it was the mayor, the city councilor, myself, and my colleagues on at large, Counselor Murphy and others, as well as the community, who, as a check and balance, stopped that. And then who, by working with the BRA, by rolling up their sleeves, by slogging through the details, which isn't glamorous and is hard work, and it took us a lot of time and a lot of meetings, we were able to get an historic, historic agreement that I know my friend from Austin-Brighton is envious of, that the remainder of the land on Weld Hill that is not to be built on is now tied into the lease of the arboretum for 900 years. So when we're having this discussion, let's not lose sight of the fact that the BRA does do good, that they can be held accountable, that I am proud to have held them accountable on many issues, and that, let's also not lose sight of the fact that there's a lot of good people up there, hardworking people who care about this city, who care about public service and their jobs, who are trying to do the right thing. I'm just saying, let's have a fair discussion on that and our efforts to talk about ending the BRA. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counselor Yun. You all set?
Yun? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry, this is me today. I have laryngitis, so I think that's what's going on here. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. President. Look, just some, some quick responses to my good colleague. You know, we can always look for the silver lining in everything. There's always, there is good happening everywhere in every department, no doubt. Absolutely hardworking, talented people in every department, everyone who works in the public interest of the city. That doesn't mean that we can't have the, the foresight to examine whether a department is working or whether an agency or authority is working. There are a lot of great things that happen at the MBTA. Lot of great things that the Turnpike Authority does. Doesn't mean that we can't take a critical eye and say, what's wrong with it? And even have the courage, when we say, on balance, it's not working well, to replace it. That's our job. We, we did this by legis, by means of legislation. We're legislators. We can do that. And yes, is it political? Yes. Everything's political. We're politicians. Politics is about understanding the values and priorities of the people that you work for and then making the appropriate actions and having the appropriate discussions so we move the, the conversation forward and take action when necessary. That's what we're elected to do. That's politics. So, yeah, let's be real clear about that. Layoffs, there are so many talented people up there on the ninth floor. I know many of them. We keep the people who are doing, who are working on, for planning. That's the, we, we don't have to talk about layoffs. We're talking about restructuring departments so that it works for the city. And then personnel come in because they're the ones who are going to be doing the work. But that's, from time to time, let's say every 50 years, let's have a conversation about how we can restructure our city government so that it actually works. You know, in terms of accountability, let's, that's, you know, let's, let's be honest. They're not, they're not answering the questions. They're not answering the questions that we, that we ask. There's, there is deliberate delay and, and obfuscation and refusal to answer questions. And, and hand-waving and, and sophistery, that happens all the time. If we listen, just listen to our constituents, the ones who have major issues that are going on in their neighborhoods, and not that, look, I've worked with the BRA when I was in Chinatown on the outside as a nonprofit community developer. And there were good things that they did. There were terrible things that they did. But like, on balance, this is a problem. This is a major problem in our city. And now, in this economic time, we cannot afford to just say, well, it's good enough. Let's just let them lie. I mean, let's, think of all the good things. Let's focus on all the good things. We can't be doing that anymore. There are too many critical issues. The Elma Lewis Center, one year of nothing happened on Parcel 3 in Roxbury. One year of nothing happened when the BRA could have taken all that talent, all that energy, all the good ideas that were approved by the community and moved it forward. And finally, because the community spoke up, the BRA, with the approval of the mayor, through the approval of the mayor, reversed itself and said, now you're back on track. That is one year of loss of moving forward a project that could have helped the economic development of, of that part of Roxbury. So we can't afford that, Mr. President, and this is why, you know, let's just, let's have that conversation, I think, as my good colleague is saying. colleague is saying. Let's have the conversation, but let's be real honest with ourselves and say, if it's not working, what's not working? And not be afraid to be critical. That's what we're, that's what we're paid for. That's why we're elected. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Yoon. Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very briefly, let's be honest with ourselves. Where is this going? Any mayor that would sign this home rule petition would have to have his head examined.
Been waiting for that all day long, Counsel Murphy.
Let's be honest. Obviously, we all know that this is an issue that's come since Shirley Kressel introduced it in the 2001 campaign, I think it was. And it comes up every other year, on an odd number of year, at every one of the candidates' forums you go to across the city, including last night in Ward Five. Whether we should do a planning board, and every time I get up, I say, "You can't do that because state law supersedes city council ordinance." Okay? State law doesn't supersede state law, but you've got to change state law to do that. And how do we change state law? With a home rule petition. And what does it need? The support of the body, the signature of the mayor, and then the support of the legislature and the signature of the governor. This isn't going anywhere. I, just in a practical way, I think, and I've had my disagreements with the B R A and I've applauded the B R A. There are things the B R A have done, as others have pointed out, that have been great things. And then there are times where I think that they've overstepped their bounds or they haven't listened enough to us. The situation is what it is. This will not change it. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that matter shall be referred. Really quickly, Counsel Yoon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just had to respond. I'm going to have my head examined. I think pilot payments and creating a formula for pilot falls in that exact same category. I just do remember that, my good colleague, you did offer the exact same piece of legislation that you did five, six years ago on that issue. That as a practical manner, let's be honest as well. Let's be really honest. Harvard University having, laying off workers, how many of them was it yesterday or today? Are we really going to get them to pony up more money? This is, you know, honesty is good. And so everything, you know, we are accustomed to saying, there are two sides to everything. Yes, there are. But let's hear both sides. That's all we're asking. And this is a, this was created by legislation. This could be done by us and then it could happen, it was done in 1960. So the precedent is, if we're going to talk about precedents of ideas that just have been floated out there and have gone nowhere, you know, we can continue to talk about that as well. But just wanted to bring a little balance to the discussion. I'll get that head examined very soon. Thanks.
Thank you. That matter shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations, Docket 0880.
Docket number 0880. Counsel Yoon offered the following. Resolution that the city council oppose a number of anti-consumer bills pending in the general court and that the council ask the Boston delegation to oppose them as well.
Chair recognizes Counsel Yoon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last issue on my soapbox for today. There is an effort undergoing, going on right now at the State House to weaken laws that protect consumers in the following way. Consumers have a right to know when they bring an item to the cash register exactly how much it costs. It should be either clearly labeled or have been clearly labeled when it was on the shelf. But C V S has been found guilty of violating the item pricing law to the tune, and was fined to the tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. They are by far the worst offender. But clearly, the law isn't working in that there hasn't been any change in their behavior. And given the amount of profit that C V S makes, they consider just a part of, you know, the cost of doing business, which is to just be fined. And yet now, through a kind of army of lobbyists and lawyers, there are 30 different ways in which these laws are being weakened by bills in the State House. And all this is, this resolution simply says that, asking our representatives in the State House to oppose these laws and not just oppose the weakening of item pricing laws and consumer protection, but to strengthen them. But first, you know, we need to stop the bills that are up there that try to create all these exemptions for retailers that are vulnerable to making these violations. So that's what this is about. And I do ask that, you know, we have a hearing on this. Not, we're not going to, I'm not going to call for suspension and passage, Mr. President, but that we have a hearing, learn a little bit more, but hopefully we can send a unanimous resolution to the State House and particularly to our Boston delegation about this. Thank you.
Thank you. That matter shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. There are personnel orders, please. Mr. Clerk, absent objection from any of my colleagues, I would ask that dockets 0882, 0883, 8485, 8687, 88, and 89, which are all personnel in nature and listed on page four of the agenda, be suspended and passed. Hearing and seeing no objection, those matters all shall have been passed. Any of my colleagues wishing to pull a matter from the green sheets, please signify by doing so. Counsel Lamatina.
Thank you. Mr. President, I'd like to pull Docket number 0734 from City and Neighborhood Services, page 3 of 16.
Hearing no objection from any members of the City and Neighborhood Services Committee. Madam Clerk, please read the matter.
Massachusetts to Implement a Regular License Plate Reissuance and Replacement Program.
I'd like to turn this matter to Counsel Consavo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that we pass this resolution today. This is something that's falling in line with the out-of-state license plate issue, which I refuse to give up on as a means to generate new revenue to the city of Boston to the tune of over $1 million in a time when we so desperately need it. And we are working with the administration. The mayor and Commissioner Tinlin are moving towards agreement, we believe, on working with Lisa and Gail Hackett to come up with a system to have the city crack down on out-of-state license plates. One of the ways that the state is looking to crack down on it, and we can support their effort by passing this resolution, is to reissue license plates. Most states, most, every state in the Commonwealth, actually every certain number of years, whether it's two years, five years, 10 years, reissues their license plates. They literally take them back in and they give them back out to everybody. And it's a way to catch everybody who's cheating the system. And if the Commonwealth were to do that, it would generate tons of excise tax revenue to the city because we would get not only the out-of-state people who are cheating the system, but we would get all those people who, say, live in Hyde Park but have their car registered and debt them. Obviously, we can catch the out-of-staters because it's visual, but we aren't, we can't catch those people. The reissue of plates will catch both and it would generate an enormous amount of excise tax revenue for every city and town in the Commonwealth, but specifically the city of Boston. And so we're working with our colleagues on state level. They are looking at examining this now and it's really only going to happen if there's a will of cities and towns to see this happen. And it's our time to weigh in on it and the time is now. This has had three public hearings before the city council, so it's had due public process. And I would urge my colleagues, Mr. President, to vote for this and ask that we pass this and send this up to the governor today. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Counsel Yancey.
Mr. President, I simply would like to have a copy of the resolution. It will be building.
Clerk, do you have a copy? Could you have a copy delivered to Counsel Yancey of Docket 0734? Director Braga, would you provide Counsel Yancey with a docket, a copy of Docket 0734? Counsel Consavo now moves.
He wants it before.
Counsel Consavo.
Mr. President, through you to the maker, does he want that copy before we vote on it or after we vote on it so he can review it?
Counsel Yancey, would you like that docket now?
Yes, I would like to know what we're voting on, Mr. President. Would like to have the actual resolution before the vote.
Mr. President, I will get that resolution, which every member had a copy already given to them at the hearing that we had at English High School, so I'm sure members have that. But I will work to, ask for a brief recess so we can get an additional copy given to Counsel Yancey.
Thank you. Counsel will be in recess.[1305.98]